Good morning. We will call this meeting to order this morning and welcome everyone if you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll join us, please, for a moment of silence before we begin our budget workshop. Thank you. This is the special budget workshop that we have called to have some follow-up discussion and provide additional guidance if needed to the staff so we can have a final budget to look at approving at our upcoming meeting next Wednesday night. When we left the commissioners' meeting last Monday night, we had asked staff to follow up on some specific items and then basically they come together and put together some options for us to look at based on some of the feedback we provided the other evening. So I think if you don't mind, what we'll do is get started by you all explaining some of the options you've put before us and then we can open the floor for discussion.
Absolutely. What you have before you is three options. The common denominator in all three options is the elimination of the debt repayment fund for the Public Works Complex Phase Two. It's eliminated in all three. That's the 129-530. The first option is with a two-cent tax increase. It adds the Fourth of July fireworks and, as I said, it eliminates the debt repayment. That's a two-cent tax increase. The rest of the budget that was presented would remain. The second option is simply, again, a two-cent tax increase, adds the Fourth of July, eliminates the debt, and it appropriates one time only from the fund balance to create a capital reserve fund for sidewalks/multi-use paths. And you see that amount there adding the 88-951, which was from the closeout of the capital reserve fund for the fire station, and then the additional fund balance appropriation for a total of $100,000. And then lastly, option three, this maintains a three-cent tax increase. It adds the funds with the Fourth of July, again eliminates the debt, and it provides for an ongoing fund for the capital reserve fund for sidewalks/multi-use paths. You see there, that's the 109-530. Here, again, this maintains the three cents, but it does eliminate the debt for the public workspace, too. And we'd be glad to answer any question or go into any more detail. And these are simply just three options. There is many as you can imagine, and we just felt like, you know, there wasn't any reason to overload you with options, but certainly if there's something you'd rather see, it can always be changed.
One question I had, it's more of just seeking, we've had this discussion, we had it at the Capital Improvement Workshop, but I know that I just am not as clear because time has created mental drift. The Public Works, this Phase Two, can you or staff go over again, what was going to be in that? And then what are the pros and cons? I think probably when they describe what they're going to do, I'm going to understand and I'll recall the pros, because I know we covered this at the Capital Improvement Workshop, but I'd really like a better understanding before we make the decision to consider not moving forward that this year. What does that mean for staff and for the town?
Well, it would delay implementing what is designed for Phase Two, which is creating a new fleet maintenance building on the footprint of where the sanitation equipment storage building was going to be. It also allows for expanding the police storage building and site parking improvements and a fuel island, and also administration, the administration building exterior renovation.
What's the total cost of that?
The recommended budget's going to be $1.5 million, 490, I mean, $49,000.
One and a half million.
Right. That's a construction cost of 1.2 million. The remaining fees are design fees and a contingency.
It seems I remember at some point we were talking about maybe having to pay somebody to store some of the stuff for the police evidence. Was that the case or not? Are we at that point yet or are we just maybe going to be there? Or did I just dream that?
I think we had talked in the future, we might have to get to that point.
Okay, we're not there yet.
But we're not there now.
Okay, so there's not going to be any revenue implications on that? Okay.
And the garage, this would be building a new, is building a new garage to work on all of our vehicles.
Correct.
Can someone describe currently, what's the situation like now in the garage and having to work on vehicles? I mean, and please feel free to be completely honest. I mean, where my head is, is trying to understand and maybe my fellow commissioners, is this something that we really can delay? And what are the consequences to you on a day-to-day operational basis if we delay this?
Well, right now, we have four days running a little over 150 vehicles. And a lot, sometimes we do pretty good, but it's winter time is when we really run out of control, because our garage is always full, so we have to do a lot of the work outside. The equipment weather's bad, the cold weather's bad, and also the garage is old and it's got a lot of repairs it needs. And that's what we had looked at when we started talking about building a new garage as well, whether they wanted to spend the money on what we have or go for a new garage.
And so do you envision, without investing in the new garage, that, do you have unbudgeted expenses that may hit because of repairs that are going to happen? Because I don't think we put a budget into for repairs.
Well, we do have some repairs that need to be done if we don't go to strike. The garage, we need a clean air system in the garage to bring us up to meet compliance. We have electrical issues in the garage and fire alarm systems in and out of it. So there is expenses that we probably will have to incur if we don't do something.
That's the type of information that I needed, so I appreciate that. Okay. You guys have any questions?
No, that's good.
Okay. Okay. So, I really like the inclusion of the sidewalk fund, starting to try to budget and address that.
Are you talking about option two?
Well, it's option two and in three. Three establishes the long-term fund, basically. Two is more just, is that right? One-year funding of that, which would bring the fund to $100,000, I think if I just looked at that quickly.
Right.
Yes, but it doesn't provide for basically ongoing funding.
I don't know if you remember that back in February, I got some information from Beverly about what the situation would be if we funded the whole sidewalk project. And she gave me some figures back at the time using a figure of $2 million, which is a ballpark estimate of what it would have cost to do the whole town. And we have a little bit of it done right now. I don't know how much of a difference it would make, but, and she gave me, the information she gave me was like a 10-year loan at 2.75% interest, which was about that at the time. It was a little bit estimating, a little bit high. And it's a fixed principal, so you pay the same principal every year and then the interest diminishes as you go on. And it looked to me like it was a little bit too much on a yearly basis. And then, so I asked her at the last minute this morning, and I had thought about it over the weekend, and she was kind enough to give me some more information, again using the $2 million, and doing a 15-year amortization on the sidewalks and figuring a 3.5%, which again is probably an overestimate. We would probably be able to, once we get the bid out there, to see what we get, and probably come in a little bit lower than that, but just to be on the safe side. And it fits nicely, I think, into the sidewalk situation. Let me get the right one here in front of me. Here it is. So this 15-year loan for $2 million, there's two payments made a year. And in the first year, they total, the payments total $199,000, which is about a penny in taxes, what we're talking about, which would be about what that $109,000 is on a perpetual basis. So these payments diminish over time, am I doing all right so far? These payments diminish over time, and the last payment is $139,000. So it goes from 199 to 139 by the time the 15 years is over. And if you average those payments out, the 15, the total, including interest, if you divide that by the number of years, comes out to $167,000, which is less than a penny. So what I had proposed to do back then, and I don't remember how much I talked about or how much of an impression it might have made on anybody, but if we do $100,000 for the sidewalks a year, we have a perpetual, I mean, we're going to be, it's going to be a long time before the town gets done. There'll be disruptions every year for doing $100,000 piece, $100,000, and so-and-so. And if we do, if we get a loan and get the thing engineered and get it done in, I don't know what, I have no idea what time would be, two years or something. Within two years, let's say, we could have the entire town, it's done, and on average, we're paying less than what a one-cent tax increase would be. Now, it's all speculation at this point, because as Beverly said, you know, they haven't shopped the loan yet, so obviously, so we're, but the estimates are on the high side, and I feel pretty confident that it would be, the figures I gave you would be that or even less. So if you go with option three, for instance, that's, I'll make sure I have the right one here. Yeah, if you go with option three, and then provides for the perpetual funding, that perpetual funding would be either the whole or in part, whatever the figure we come up with for that, it would be equal to the payment for getting the sidewalks done, and they'd be done. Instead of taking 10 or 15 years to get the whole town done, we could have it done all at once. It's food for thought, so, you know, I don't know, coming in kind of late in the process here with the budget thing, but when Sheila talked about money for sidewalks, it reminded me that I had gone through this before, and I thought I'd bring you an update on it, so it's something to think about. I would really, it'd be really nice, I mean, in my mind, to think that would be quite an accomplishment for us to get the whole, all the sidewalks done.
Yeah, I think so as well. Question on option three, with the three-cent tax increase, the additional cent seems to be dedicated towards sidewalks, but that's not a full cent in that line of.
No, it's not.
So the current project, we spent about $110,000, and we did almost 4,200 feet. So I'm wondering where we're getting $2 million from for completing the rest of the town.
Greg, you and I talked about this in the past, maybe you can give me a little update?
We picked the easiest ones that are to be done. And also it provided some linkage, but primarily what we looked at was what we felt like was easily accomplished, very little engineering, very little drainage, very little fill. And I think when you look at what's left, it's like the lots that are being developed today, they're more difficult to develop because the easy ones are done. So we anticipate that we might save some money if we did it all at once, like Commissioner Hogan was suggesting, but we also think just the sheer magnitude of some of the work that's going to have to be done to adjust the drainage. I'll use the example of where there's no curb and gutter, we may have to either relocate the sidewalk behind the ditch or put in curb and gutter, and that's quite a bit of money considering it's a magnitude more than what we spent.
Yeah, some place. Sorry, I knew this part of the phase was the easiest part. I just wasn't sure if we had, what else, was that a factor or something?
And if that's something that's very important to you, I think we can get Keith to give us a little more insight on that, come back with some more solid numbers. But that's generally what we're looking at.
There's also.
Does that kind of cover it? Do you have anything?
And did you use some numbers from AgEd to project that $2 million, and they included curb and gutter and additional drainage and more sidewalk drainage?
And theirs was 10-foot, too.
Right. But that wasn't, that's not where your money comes in. That extra five feet of concrete is negligible to fill and to relocating the drainage and the curb and gutter.
Yeah, once you're there, you just pour more concrete, really.
It adds to the cost, obviously, but it's.
Yeah, there's areas, like if you go north of Kmart on the east side where it just, there's the road and it just drops off like this, and that would have to be built up.
That's right.
The other thing, too, that you don't count on, and I try not to figure when I'm thinking about all the different projects that we like to do, is, you know, there's grant money, too, that comes.
That was going to be my question.
It could decrease that somewhat or even maybe substantially, I don't know. We also have to think about eventually, and the sidewalk money doesn't necessarily have to be spent where we're talking about on the bypass either, we still have Bay Drive to finish, too, so. And we've gotten substantial grant money for that in the past, where there's two pieces left to do, right? Right, Nerissa?
That's correct.
Two sections? Yeah. So I guess if you're, if anybody's thinking of, you know, allocating some money for this, then might want to consider where you want to put it also, because it doesn't have to necessarily be dedicated to one place, you know, so. I think the thing that impressed me, as long as I've been on the board, I've gotten, by far, I've gotten more comments about the sidewalk from people than I have either negative or positive about any other subject. I mean, as recently as last, last week, I was talking about Jim from Jim's Camera House, I forget his last name, he stopped me at the post office, and he said, "I'm going to commend you guys and AgEd both for doing the sidewalks." I think it makes it, if there's a tax increase, I think psychologically, people say, "Well, look what we're getting," you know? Besides, we didn't have any, now, James Almody talked briefly at the podium last meeting and mentioned the fact that could we lower it? But other than just saying, could we have a less tax increase, there was nobody ever called me or emailed me or complained to me about the proposed three cents. So I'm not sure how, I don't think there's much resistance to it, because people see things are getting done, you know?
My question on this is, is if we don't do Phase Two now, when are we looking at possibly doing this? Because it probably won't be next year. I would, at least I'm venturing a guess, it probably won't be next year. I don't think we would put that on top of beach nourishment if we do that. Or maybe we would. I know I'm putting you on the spot, but I mean, or as a board, I mean, when would we look at doing that? If we're going to cut that out now, when are we going to look at doing that? Because it's obviously something repair-wise and whatnot that needs to be done at some point, and we've gone to the, through this process. What's the timeline on this?
I think that's a really important question. And that's what's so challenging right this second in my mind, is taking the information that Mike shared, because yes, you could do that with the one cent, but if we're pulling a one cent away, if that's on the plate, and we're tabling one important project that we need to do, or replacing it with another important project, it doesn't change the fact that we need both.
Yeah.
You know, so, and there's just not enough money right now to do that. The only way to get the money is through, really through tax levies, because there's not that amount of money to determine a budget like this.
Unless somebody watching this really wants to make a huge donation, we welcome that.
We'll take it.
Your fund balance is substantial enough that if you wanted to do the three-cent increase, leave in the Public Works Complex, we would be comfortable with an additional amount coming out of fund balance to set up a capital reserve for the sidewalks.
What, in relationship with the percentage, there's, the government commission, which there's an entity that.
We have 46%.
We're above the minimum, well above the minimum.
Well above.
But in relation to other coastal towns, here, we are actually, I think, at the audit, Teresa even spoke that we are probably a little bit below the fund balance percentage for coastal, you know, our neighbors.
Compared to the others, right?
Compared to the others.
But as far as.
So that's why we're reluctant to give up a lot of this fund balance.
Sure, yeah. I mean, fix one bad storm and.
Yeah, one bad storm. And again, the economy, hopefully it's growing, hopefully, you know, sap houses will be selling. But again, you can't count on that for this.
You never know.
Didn't you say, I'm sorry, didn't you say that the revenues we're getting in that regard, as far as development, is higher than was projected? We're getting.
We're getting higher building from that than we projected.
Right, so that's, that looks like it's on its way up.
As far as sales of homes and land transfer taxes.
Well, that'll come eventually. Yeah, another good thing about the, there's flexibility with, if we had budgeted money for X project or something like that, and there is something that comes up, that can always be adjusted. You know, you could put a hold on whatever project it is that you're allotted the money to and use it for. And Beverly's always been really good about juggling the money.
That's what you call it.
Yeah.
So if we were to take option one, which, my option one, I just labeled these, make sure we're all using, was the two-cent and establishing the, establishing the capital reserve, but it's with one-time funding for the sidewalks?
That's actually option two.
Was that two?
Option numbers in the little blocks.
At the top, yeah.
At the top.
Big bold square.
Thank you. Okay.
Where?
Yeah, no. Option two.
Mine looks different from yours.
Okay, so option two, everybody else's option two. If we take that and make it, take it, are we on the same page?
No, wait a minute, mine looks different for some reason.
He prints your landscape. There you go.
Oh, different.
That's just gives you that.
I got it.
You got it?
I'm on a red page now.
Okay.
Go ahead.
If we were to take option two and actually change it to, it's going to be more like three, but anyway, but to change it to the three-cent, I know this is different than what I'd come in here thinking.
Okay.
Add the Public Works back, but then also do a few line item trims, because if we do that, we would have to take more money from fund balance if we were going to do that, because we're going to be owed for a little bit. What option two did show is that we'd have a net change. We wouldn't have spent all the money if we had gone with, am I saying that correctly, with option two compared to what was originally budgeted. We wouldn't have had as much, we wouldn't have been pulling from fund balance, the $101,000.
I don't think we were on any of the options.
I don't know, I'm not even.
Okay, so option, option two, the way it reads, forget what I said about taking it to three cents, just the way it's reading right now, the net change from the manager's budget was the $101,000, which is, which is a savings in very simplistic terms, from the budget. Compared to the budget, it's not spending $100,000.
What it's doing is it's not spending $101,000, but it's appropriating more money from fund balance also than what we projected, than what the.
$97,000.
Oh, because the $97,000.
Recommended.
But if you, if we didn't have to do.
It's, well, actually, let me, all right, this is kind of a workaround. What this is saying is we'll take $88,000, and it's all the same, because the $88,000 from the fire station went into fund balance, and then we're going to pull it back out. So the additional from the fund balance is the $11,000 at the bottom.
Got it.
Okay, and then that was our one-time only, and then we get back to square where we, before we started.
Okay.
That's just for the one-time sidewalk.
Just one-time funding, you're essentially taking money from the fire station capital project fund.
That you put in fund balance the other night.
Yes.
And that's why it was a one-time.
That's a one-time, yeah. The three-cent perpetuates that level of sidewalk funding.
Okay, so if we were to now go take that option, but make it three cent, still take the $88,000 and take it where we, for the fire department, but move it to sidewalks, then you could fund Public Works, you would not have to pull the additional $11,000 out from fund balance, because you actually, if you had that cent back here, the $190, Public Works is $123, or $129.
Yeah.
So you don't need the 11. You actually could either put more in sidewalks. It's not where exactly you wanted to be, but it does get the establishment of a fund. I don't know that we would want to commit to multi-year at this point, but at least it would help for this budget set it up, and it would establish a pretty healthy sidewalk fund.
If we set up the fund, then at some point, it could morph into the big project, because we would have a start of things.
The fund when I was proposing.
Okay. So it kind of gets the best of both worlds, but it doesn't do what you're saying as far as absolutely putting out that long-term plan.
It's something to think about, yeah.
Wouldn't it be easier just to make an option four and go with the original budget and then just add the multi-use path?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, it's basically that, but it's establishing the sidewalk.
That would be really, I think that would be kind of impressive if we could do all of that and still stay at the three cents, as you.
Absolutely.
I'm sure somebody in the audience would be happy, wouldn't they? Again, I mean, just to mention, I know we don't count on any of this, but we have $20,000 for the fireworks, but there's grant money for that, and matter of fact, we were spending $20,000 this year, but we actually ended up spending only a little over 12, because we got a nice grant from the tourist bureau. We don't count on that one, we're figuring that one.
We don't, and because this was, this wasn't in the original budget, I also had just some notes that I had made, not just on fireworks, but because the fireworks was added in after the, after the fact, does that have any impact or does there need to be any departmental rebudgeting? Because I'm sure that has an impact on public safety. I don't know, does it require overtime and does it have an impact on cleanup? And I mean, I don't know what the departmental impacts are.
With the new regulations after the disaster in Ocracoke, pretty much this is turnkey. There obviously will be some cleanup on the beach the next day, but that's there whether we do the, whether we had the fireworks show or not.
Yeah, maybe.
Still have, still have that. Um, as far as, um, public safety, the same thing, they're gonna, it's, they're gonna be doing, um-
It's gonna be a busy night regardless.
Regardless, yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
Okay, okay. The other thing, just to run through some of my questions and notes, if you guys don't mind, um, ice cream social. I know when we did it this past year, it was kind of another thing that we brought back, and it was wildly successful again, I think. There was talk about wanting that to be an annual event, I don't think we budgeted that, because the three thousand that's in special events, I believe goes to trash attack.
Mary, don't you have ice cream social money in there?
If it is in there, great, but I don't know that-
How much was that? More than a bunch, was it?
Twenty-five hundred, maybe?
Eighteen hundred?
I think three thousand dollars, I can't, if you'll look at, I think three thousand is allocated for special events.
It is, it is. But I think that was trash attack.
Okay.
Potentially, yeah.
Granted, trash attack didn't spend all that, but one, we just had a wrap-up meeting last week, and one of the things the committee did say is they would like to utilize more money, I think they only spent maybe a little over a thousand. They would like to use more of the budgeted amount, unless we have to decrease that budget, to do some advanced marketing beforehand, probably like a North Beach sun ad or something like that. And then also maybe a thank you ad afterwards, because we did have such, uh, great sponsorship and, and support of that as a way to-
I'm afraid the, the, um, ice cream social could be an oversight on my part. If, if all three thousand is for the trash attack, then no, there's not additional money.
How much was it?
Well, sorry, do you guys remember what the total was that was spent?
For the ice cream?
And my thought, instead of having to, to dig, we went through the budget last time, and I had circled a few line items that seemed to be comfortable. One of them was advertising, you know, there's seventeen thousand put in the advertising line item, and what this, this current year, we're projected to spend under twelve, I think it was eleven-five. Um, looking historically back, two years ago, I think we spent thirteen. My thought was, take, drop that account to fourteen, which is still more than we've spent over the past three years, and use that money for the ice cream social, instead of you guys having to find new money, just a suggestion.
Yeah, that's pretty cool. You've been thinking, huh?
Every now and then I do that, yeah.
How much for the ice cream social, did you say?
Um, that would put three thousand, I don't know if you need that much, but-
Three thousand additional into special events?
Into special events, so then special events is truly funding at that point, fireworks, ice cream social, and trash attack.
So, we're just gonna take three from advertising and put it in special events in administration department, okay?
That's fine. Okay, so, does everybody think about where we might be at this point?
Well, just like I said, the, the, doing all the sidewalks at once doesn't, I mean, if we've got that fund started with a hundred plus in it, if we decide two years from now to do that, then we've already got a couple hundred thousand dollars-
We've got somewhere to start.
To get started with it, or we could just do it as-
But we could start immediately and do more sidewalks this year, just small projects until we have enough money to do big projects.
We can spend that now.
Because I kinda like, that would be my preference, based on-
It's the pay as you know, like we do the streets, I mean, and the downside, as, as Commissioner Hogan says, is it takes longer. The upside is if, if there is a situation where one year, um, perhaps you're not able to do that much, then you're not obligated with the debt.
Right.
Now, and when, when, if we don't spend, um, in, in certain line items, is, instead of rolling that back into general fund, do we have the discretion to roll it into one of these special accounts, one of these sidewalk accounts? So, for example, um, I know we had discussion at the last meeting about the budget with HVAC units, and that there's, in my opinion, a s- a fair amount budgeted for that, and I understand why, it's the what-if. If they break their, their big ticket items, but if they don't break, you know, that was thirty thousand dollars or forty thousand dollars, that instead of reverting that to general fund, could that not be allocated to sidewalks?
Sure, you can, you can, that's, it goes back into your fund balance, and-
Then you just take it back out.
For example, let's say we do a, we do a street project, we put it out to bid, and it comes, let's just say it comes in fifty thousand over what, what we have in the budget. You can, you can take that from fund balance, so-
Which we've done before, right.
Exactly, that's, and that's the same thing.
Or, we, and that's the way you would always take it, you wouldn't take it from another line item in the budget, because you need to take it. The reason I'm saying, let's say we get down to, um, May of next year, and, well, no, let's not get that clear. Let's say we get down into March of next year, and we needed, you know, we could do X number more with the sidewalk if we had forty thousand dollars more, would you aut- you would automatically look to fund balance instead of looking at your forecast and your budget of what you're gonna spend and what you're not gonna spend?
Right, because it is-
You always go to fund balance, yes ma'am, okay.
But, but then, at the end of the fiscal year, at the end of June, the money's in those line items that haven't been spent, that aren't encumbered, or, um-
Right, and they're gonna go back into fund balance.
It's gonna go back into fund balance.
So, it may be a wash at the end, maybe, you just don't know, yeah, okay.
We're hoping it never gets that close. We're always hoping there's money that goes back into fund balance, that the revenues, that the revenues are higher than we've-
Some years are tighter than others.
Yeah, the revenues are higher and that the expenses are lower.
Perfect.
What I would like for, next year we'll be doing a two-year budget, correct? Okay, what I would love for, um, to see when we're doing that budget next year, and you may think it's irrelevant, in a way it may be, I don't know, um, would be to look at the trends over the past three to four years of what has been appropriated each year annually in the budget during the time of budget, and what act- what's been the actual, with respect to fund balance.
Uh, that, that is one of the things that Beverly runs trends on.
Cool, yeah, I would love to see that trend, but I don't need it now, I mean, we can, but I think as we're looking into a two-year budget, yeah, I would like to have that as a comparison when we're, when we're looking at-
Sure.
You know, some of those line items where we tend, tend, may tend to be more conservative. That trend analysis would probably be helpful.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Comments?
Another, another line item we had talked about was if the vehicles are approved, then the expectation would be that the fleet maintenance line item would be decreased. Has any thought been put into the various departments that have requested vehicles on what their projected outlook would be?
The projected outlook for the, uh, fleet maintenance repairs is probably not gonna see the benefit of the vehicle replacement until the following year, because most of the time, the, um, state contracts award their contracts sometime, what, Sharon, October, November? We don't get those vehicles in until, we still haven't gotten some vehicles, I mean, we're still waiting to get some vehicles in. They don't usually come in until the last quarter of our fiscal year, so, but- So, you're only, um, what is it, half a year is what we budget for payments? Mm-hmm, half a year payments, and then the next year is, hopefully the, um, and I think that, Stuart, some of the newer vi- I mean, it's, it's, I can't even talk this much.
All right, so they're still waiting on, or police call, and I think that's it, we've received everything yet.
And I've seen some, I mean, even though we're, they're very busy and they're, the, um, fleet expenses are higher, I think that as the new, as the replacements come in, you will see that the actual, um, expenses are lower the following years.
I think you're referencing the, the jump in the estimated actuals of this year, forty-five hundred to next year of eleven-three? Is that, is that the line item, or are you, are you looking at a different one?
I'm, I'm scanning various departments and just looking to see what the projection's gonna be, and that's, so that's no specific department at this point, but-
Is there, um, you sell the vehicles that we're not gonna be using any once you get the new ones. Is that, is that ever figured in here, and is it much money, or is it not, is it irrelevant pretty much, or?
It's made, it's figured in, so, fixed assets is, is figured in, but not so much as detailed on which asset, which, you know, truck, or-
It's not really a lot.
It's more than it used to be.
It, it's not, it's more than it used to be, but it's, um-
They're all sold on, um, uh, what's it called, the?
Gov deal.
Yeah, gov deal.
Gov deal, yeah. But that's all, I understand what you're saying, okay.
And at this point, our vehicles are, are older, we're selling them in their, their older, um, month. We have fifteen thousand budgeted, revenue budgeted for self, um, fixed assets, but as Beverly says, we don't itemize. We don't itemize.
Like which, which vehicle, yeah. But you don't-
We just grab fifteen thousand out of the air.
Oh, that's how you do it, right? Pull money out of the air, I wish I could do that.
We look, you know, we look at what we've done in the past, and I think that's a solid number.
Very good, well, you've done a great job all these years, so, we trust you, at least I do.
That's nice to hear.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments you guys have?
Works for me. I like what you said.
Is that, um-
Doing it all.
Do we have enough consensus to approve that budget, that with?
That would be, uh, as I, I said it before, that would be pretty impressive to be able to get all that done, get it done now, because one thing that I keep thinking about is, we're looking at three cents next year for beach nourishment, and I guess that's what it's probably gonna be, I don't, I don't know if it'd be two and a half or, or four, but we don't really know.
And I don't know that it's, I should say, I don't know that based on the timeline Ken presented, I don't know that it's an absolute definite it's gonna be next year, I don't know, I mean, I think it's likely, but if it doesn't have to be, we may not, I think it just really is gonna depend, you know, on how these timelines fall. I mean, I think the bottom line is inevitably at some point in the future, whether it's next year or the year after, there will need to be the beach nour- you know, the tax for beach nourishment, and whatever that is gonna be to fund it is what we're gonna have to propose.
Well, what we, uh, it may not be strictly true, but what we don't do now, um, in, in my mind, I'm thinking with the beach nourishment, we're not gonna get done for two years, and if we do this public works complex and set it aside this year, it looks like if we do the three cents next year, it might get set aside again, and that's, you know, if we can get it wrapped up now, get it started now with the, with the, the funds in, in this budget for the debt service, I think we wouldn't have to be, can be concerned about that later on when we're funding beach nourishment.
Yeah, and that, that was kind of my thought, is the longer we delay, the harder it's gonna be to, to ever, I mean, where we are now, and the reason that it's gonna take three cent to do this, even though now we're trying to do the sidewalks too, is because there's been, eh, most of these items have been delayed for-
Years.
Years, and so it's, it's catching up, and to continue to let, to delay it, even though, you know, none of us like to have to raise taxes, but to continue to delay it is either gonna just increase your operational line items, probably exponentially is, is more and more doesn't get done, or, you know, when you start running into potential safety issues at the, the garage, um, or hazardous work conditions, you know, that's, that's not what we wanna do for our employees, so, it is what it is.
So, the-
Yeah.
If I read through correctly, the average increase for a two-hundred thousand dollar house, if we do a three cent, would be forty dollars a year?
Excuse me, forty and sixty, I think?
Average increase, if we do a three cent increase, the average increase on a property tax for the homeowner would be what?
I think, um, at one point, we did it based on a median, and it's gonna be roughly fifty-five to sixty dollars on the median. That's a little over two hundred thousand.
A little over two hundred, right.
It's like two fifty, two hundred and fifty-three thousand.
Yeah, mine would be like fifty-four.
Fifty-something, fifty-five, I was like.
For the year. So, if, if, if I may, just to make sure Beverly and I understand where we are, maintain a three cent tax increase, add funds for the Fourth of July fireworks, move three thousand from advertising and administration to special events to cover, um, ice cream social for a total of six thousand there, um, between trash attack and ice cream social. And then we're going to, I think where we're a little unclear, are we going to establish a capital reserve fund for sidewalks and multi-use paths, or are we just looking at the one time?
I would say establish the fund.
What, what you would do, if you're establishing the fund, it would be like our other funds where you say in it strive to, um, appropriate.
Doesn't, so you don't have to.
Right, well, you don't, you don't lock yourself in on a certain amount, you don't say, you know, you're gonna appropriate three cents, or you could say you're gonna strive to appropriate, and, and I don't know what the amount is, if we're looking at a hundred thousand a year.
Roughly.
Because option three, um, it appropriates money for sidewalks, um, per- in perpetuity, but it does not appropriate money for the, um, public works complex, which is also in perpet- perpetuity for fifteen years.
Wait, I guess what, what I'm understanding, you're, to move forward with the public works, you are making the fifteen-year commitment, and that, you know, percent of that tax, that, you're making that commitment, you can't, that's not an option to say, well, we're not gonna do it next year.
Right.
Why don't you do what you're doing? The sidewalk, we could establish the fund, I think it's good to establish the fund with a goal of, you know, at this point, a hundred thousand per year, because we think we could, we can do that for the first year, probably. But then each board has to make the decision to truly allocate that, I mean, we've got some funds that we're not funding this year, some, but I like that because, I mean, at some point, if we're not sitting up here, at least it puts it back in front of the board each year to, to consider that, and hopefully it will remain a priority.
So, it's not a one-time deal, we're actually, we're, we're actually doing the fund, so it's not, so it is ongoing?
It is, but we would still have to appropriate each year for that.
But you don't, you don't have to, you would strive to do it, as you say, right, right.
And, well, that's correct, um, what we're doing is that we're pulling from, from the fund balance this year, so we would have to address that at some point, we'd have to catch it up. And we could use the hundred thousand dollars for sidewalks, place that into the, um, recreational capital reserve fund that already exists, earmark that money this year, and do whatever sidewalks we can do for the hundred thousand dollars. Well, plus, um, as we were talking about earlier, um, you could say the hundred thou- you strive to do a hundred thousand a year, that would include appropriation and grant funding. So, if you, you know, if you got fifty thousand in grants, and then you would-
Fifty, yeah.
Use fifty thousand of your budget.
Right, right, I guess what I'm thinking is, if, the original budget that was presented, that had, had the public works but didn't have the sidewalk, it also didn't have the eighty-eight-
No, right.
Nine fifty-one, okay, so if we're taking the eighty-eight, nine fifty-one and putting it in the sidewalk fund now, right? To get to a hundred, now, that's right, if you go back to this option two and you're adding that tax, and you're adding a hundred and ninety thousand, so then you're still sixty thousand, so we're not having to pull additional funds, we're actually better, right, for this year, because of that eighty-eight thousand coming from fire, from the fire department.
Right, for this year.
Because there's sixty thousand, if I just did my math correctly, there's almost, well, there's sixty thousand, four seventy. When you put the three, the one cent back in, so you're taking the, basically you're adding a hundred and ninety thousand in, right? And then, you take the one twenty-nine back out of that, because that's gonna be appropriated for the public work, so we're left with sixty thousand, and we're only gonna need to take, you know, less than twelve thousand of that to get to the hundred thousand to add to the fire, to the money from the fire department.
I think you got your twenty, you got your twenty for, um, fireworks.
Okay.
All right.
You go ahead.
Yeah.
You go ahead.
Right, I guess bottom line is, we're, we're not pulling even more out with this option than we originally were budgeting to pull out. Because of the fire, if we didn't, if we weren't moving the fire department, we would be, but because of that.
So, I guess, I guess our question is, what is the amount that you want to see in the capital reserve for the sidewalks?
Around a hundred?
Hundred thousand.
Is it a hundred thousand, okay? Okay, so, so basically, what we've done today is to the manager's recommended budget, added a hundred thousand plus the twenty thousand for fireworks. I know we've done some moving around of line items.
If you don't look at the, if you don't look at the options, don't compare it to the options, just from the men- If you don't look at the, if you don't look at the options, don't compare it to the options, just from the, yes, from the recommended budget.
The recommended budget, what you've done is added twenty thousand for fireworks and a hundred thousand for sidewalks.
And established the sidewalk fund, putting a hundred thousand in.
And I think the other question is, would the board prefer to see a, as opposed to doing the sidewalks and multi-pass in the recreation reserve, would you prefer to see a separate reserve for sidewalk slash multi-use paths? We probably would look at establishing it for ten years, would you think?
I would do that.
I would think so. I think the public would like to see that as well because I think that's something there that's very important.
Capital reserve fund for sidewalks, okay. Repeat it one more time, what we're doing, okay? We're taking basically the... What the, what the, what the board is recommending is to take the manager's recommended budget as presented, adding twenty thousand for Fourth of July fireworks and a hundred thousand for capital reserve fund for sidewalks, multi-use paths.
Okay. And then the... And then the moving... A hundred and twenty appropriation from fund balance, and we've got a balanced budget.
Yes, and then also the three thousand dollars for the Ice Cream Social.
They don't change the numbers, they just move it from one line to another.
Yeah.
What'd you say?
I said it keeps it pretty simple.
It certainly wasn't my intention to delay the meeting and then potentially spend an additional, an additional twenty thousand, so I'm not in favor.
Do you, anything you want to bring up for discussion?
One example was the, I'm still having an issue with the vehicle replacements and the amount of money, the public perception, and what's being done so far with those. And I'd like to get, I'm going to send an email requesting some additional information. And then not being able to necessarily show a savings because the vehicles are coming in late but being purchased now, it's getting harder and harder for me to handle that. Basically, all we're doing as a result of this special workshop is adding sidewalks in so that the public sees something viable, in my opinion.
Well, it isn't, yeah, you're right, it isn't just for perception, it's actually getting something done too.
I hear what you're saying. Look at these sidewalks, don't focus over here. You wouldn't throw away a ten-year-old vehicle because it needed a little bit of repair. I don't think any of us would.
And some of them are not just, I mean, some of them are severe repairs, I mean...
And that's what I'm going to ask for, I mean, I do this for a living, so I'm going to ask for some additional information and that might help me understand it a little better.
And, and I dealt with this quite a bit when I was dealing with transportation with the county more and it's, it's, it's an ongoing thing and you know this with, with purchasing on, on contract with the state. It's, it's, it's not unusual at all for it to be a delayed process. I know we've, we've purchased the vans that you, the white vans that you see going up and down the road and sometimes it's a year and a half out when we purchase those things. So it's, it's, it's often a really, really...
Doesn't make sense to me.
Very, very backlogged. I get, I used to get really, really confused which fiscal year we were in when we were balancing budgets. You know, Greg was shaking his head, it was really, really crazy. So it's, it's, it's very frustrating sometimes when you're dealing with that, but it's, it's not at all uncommon. So I'm sure, I, I don't know that I realized the municipalities had that problem as well as the counties and the states, so it's, it is unfortunate, but I guess that's just the way the wheels turn, so... But that's, I guess that's the price you pay to get, get it in bulk and get the prices that we get, so...
Well, my, when I was hearing that same conversation, my concern was, yes, I see that you're not going to see the financial bang for your buck this year, but if, you know, thinking out into next, to, not the 2015 fiscal year, but the 2016, if we delayed that, then these vehicles, we would still be almost two more years with the existing vehicles. And then you start getting the, you know, then you get the car. So that's when I was thinking, gosh, if we delay that, we, we could have a significant issue because you're not just delaying it a year. I mean, by doing it now, they're going to get it at the end of the, towards the end of the last quarter of the fiscal year. If we delay it one more year, then they're going pretty much almost two years in these vehicles. So that's what, it's like, wow, we can't delay that. And then with the public works, because, you know, I know this, this may seem a change from what the direction I was looking at last Monday night, but to also consider potential issues that we have at the public works, not just because you may have to work outside and that's uncomfortable, but, you know, if we have a fire suppression issue out there or if we have ventilation issues because our garage is not where it needs to be operating it with code, I mean, those are significant issues. And if we had to, that money's not in this budget. If we had to start making those repairs, we didn't budget, so we're going to be pulling from fund balance anyway. So that's where my head was, we pay now or we pay later? If we pay now, we're paying on a, a solid plan that gets us where we need to be versus patchwork until we're still going to have to make that investment down the road. So that's what led me to the, to the change in my kind of school of thought of getting to where we are. And if we're going to do this kind of tax increase, then yes, I think it's important for the public to also see and get something out of that. You know, they have to trust us that we're making the right decision for the town with the way we're spending the money with the public works and the vehicles because they're not using those facilities or in those. But something tangible they can see and feel and go, you know, this is the right thing that our commissioner is doing. To me, that's why it was important to also put sidewalks in there as well.
I agree, but...
And also...
It is different than where we were last Monday night, but that's why.
Also, it was discussed somewhat at the, at the last meeting, but, and I agree with Travis in the sense that if you, a vehicle needs fixed, it takes X amount of dollars to fix the vehicle, but there's so many other things that revolve around that. There's the downtime, there's, you know, hypothetically, the planning vehicle breaks down and it gets over there and then a police car breaks down and jumps in front of it because that's a priority. There's been occasions when they've been without a vehicle, one specific vehicle, for weeks at a time. And there's also vehicles that we have spent far more than they're worth at this moment in the last couple of years, if you add up the last couple of years. And there's, there's just a lot of other costs associated with it. And there's been times when people, you know, they had to use their own vehicle, which, you know, they get reimbursed for. There's a lot more to it in, to me, than just whether or not a vehicle can be fixed and how much it costs to be fixed.
And also, if I can offer to you that the estimated actual was really, is really an estimate at what March, when the budget was put together. And that figure has probably changed somewhat since then. If you look back at the actual for the previous fiscal year, it was a hundred, one forty-seven, five-ten, that's on page nine. We've actually budgeted less than that actual number. And what we can do is come back to you for a revised estimated actual. I mean, I think it just in the last week, Sharon, what was our emergency purchase orders for fleet maintenance? Five or six thousand dollars in the last week?
Since thirteen thousand, since June first, so...
And we're talking about having not had purchased vehicles for a number of years, whatever number, I don't even know what number it is for sure. But this is also something that if, if we go ahead with this and we get the vehicles, then we get back into our rotation and we won't have to have such a significant purchase in future years because they could be rotated into the fleet.
But we do have specific detail information on each one of the vehicles that have been requested to be replaced, so...
I'd like to see that.
Say that's probably the information with your business that makes sense for you to have.
We have that information. We tried to summarize it easily, but we do have specific detail for you.
I'd like to see that.
The department heads that I've spoken to that have requested the vehicles, there, there's no question in their mind that it's, that it's a need, it's been actually, it's been something that's been needed for a couple of years, so...
I understand the need or it wouldn't be in the budget.
Right.
That doesn't mean that we don't research it and, and make sure that it's what it's supposed to be.
Okay, anything else? Any comments, questions?
We can always have a look at these vehicles in person too, as well, right?
Sure, absolutely, I'm sure staff would be more than happy to accommodate. All right, well, it's the only business we are here to conduct today, so if everyone's, we don't need to do anything else? Anyone has anything else? A motion would be in order to adjourn.
So moved?
Second. Any other comments? Are those in favor? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?